There's two of them, that's why, I mean, I changed, that's the only one there's two. They wanted to have two of them, so I'm gonna give them two.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Oh, sorry. You're good, Brian? All right, good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Fayette County Commissioners Meeting. It is Thursday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at approximately ten a.m. Do we have any pastors here who would like to pray? Okay, come on up. If everybody will stand for a moment of prayer, please introduce yourself.
Good morning, I'm Pastor Ryan Washabaugh from Calvary and Asbury United Methodist Churches, and it is my honor this morning to invite the Holy Spirit into this place. Let us pray together. O gracious God, we are a people who strive with one another, but Lord, we often do not remember. Lord, we remember Joseph, whose brothers threw him away, but he forgave them and became their salvation. Lord, we remember Jacob and Esau, who fought in their mother's womb, but they became reconciled on the battlefield. Lord, we remember your people who suffered an exile, and Queen Esther, who took a stand for such a time as this to end the strife, and still we strive against one another. Our brothers strive against sisters, mothers and fathers strive against daughters and sons. We strive among races and among nations and among classes. We strive across the miles and across the ages. We strive in the Christian family, in the human family. But Lord Jesus prayed for our unity. Almighty God, you reconciled us to yourself and gave us the ministry of reconciliation. Lord, you created one humanity out of the two. You've broken down the dividing walls of hostility. You say there's neither Jew nor Greek, male nor female, slave nor free. You say, how good is it for us to dwell in unity? You say there's plenty of good room. You say, get on board, there's room for many more. Lord, you say, lay down your sword and shield down by the riverside and study war no more. Lord, we pray this day for the work of this body, a people that have been called to make decisions and choices that impact your people in this county and beyond. Lord, give them the wisdom of Solomon, being able to make wise choices and decisions. And Lord, most importantly, give them the heart and integrity of Jesus Christ, a heart that cares for all God's people and the integrity of the one who died a sinner's death for the salvation of God's people, maintaining integrity without blemish. Lord, bless this time and the work of this body today. It is in the name of the Most High Lord Jesus Christ we pray.
Thank you. If you will face the flag, stay or remain standing, and repeat. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three is public comment on agenda items. If there is any public comment on anything that's on the agenda, now is the time to bring that up. Hearing none. Number four, we will go to proclamations.
The first one is Court Employee Appreciation Week. Everybody here for that, where we land tomorrow? Court Employee Appreciation Week Proclamation, May ninth, May fifth through May ninth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas commissioners of Fayette County are proud to join the Court of Common Pleas of Fayette County in honoring the dedicated individuals who served as court employees in Fayette County. And whereas commissioners extend their sincere appreciation to all court employees for their unwavering commitment to uphold the justice system and ensure its accessibility to the public. Their dedication, professionalism, integrity are integral to the fair and effective administration of justice. And whereas recognizing the outstanding service of the court employees, the commissioners strive to reinforce public confidence in the justice system, fostering a culture of appreciation and acknowledge the critical role these individuals play in maintaining the rule of law. And now therefore be a result that the Fayette County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May fifth to the ninth, twenty twenty-five, as Court Employees Appreciation Week in Fayette County, signed by the Fayette County Commissioner.
The next is National Osteoporosis Awareness Month. So we are recognizing May as National Osteoporosis Awareness Month. And whereas osteoporosis is a disease that affects millions of people across the United States by weakening bones and increasing risk of fractures. According to the National Osteoporosis Foundation, approximately 10 million Americans have osteoporosis, additional 44 million have low bone density, putting them at risk. Whereas raising awareness about osteoporosis is crucial for early detection and prevention. Proper education and support can help those affected by this disease manage their condition and reduce the likelihood of severe complications. And whereas the Seropinist International of Americas sponsors a quarterly osteoporosis support group who is sponsored by Dr. John Sunyas, which provides invaluable resources, education, and support to individuals in Fayette County who are dealing with osteoporosis. And whereas Fayette County residents are encouraged to participate in activities that promote bone health, such as regular exercise, a balanced diet, nutrition policy, and providing routine bone density sessions for the protection of bone health. Now therefore, we, the Fayette County Commissioners, by virtue of our ability, do proclaim May National Osteoporosis Awareness Month in Fayette County, and we urge all citizens of Fayette County to combat osteoporosis and support the efforts to improve bone health and prevent fractures.
Thank you.
You want to say anything? All right, the next one is Older Americans Month, and for that, girl, that's the older commissioner.
Okay, welcome. Older Americans Month, twenty twenty-five, a proclamation. Whereas during the month of May, we celebrate our nation's sixty-second anniversary of the observance of Older Americans Month with a twenty twenty-five theme, Flip the Script on Aging. And whereas Fayette County changed the narrative about what it means to be an older adult and flipped the script from focusing on limitations and lost potential to highlighting the strengths and advantages that come with growing older. And whereas Fayette County is committed to challenging stereotypes by engaging in meaningful conversations, worthwhile activities for older adult population. And whereas Fayette County is partnering with the southwestern Pennsylvania area on agency on aging, Albert Gallatin Services, Conestview area Senior Tigers, Cross Keys Human Services, Fayette County Community Action, HPS Aging Services to enhance the lives of older Americans in our community by acknowledging older adults and their many valuable contributions to society, promoting intergenerational opportunities through education, recreation, and service to share their time, experience, talents with those that follow, encouraging independence, inclusion, and participation in our economy and community. Now therefore, we, be a result, the Fayette County Commissioners, here due, proclaim May twenty twenty-five as Older Americans Month. We urge every resident during this special time to reflect and hold dearly the work of these most precious older members of our community, signed by the Fayette County Commissioners, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, not a small print.
We just want to extend our thanks to the community partners in Fayette County. We do have just significant appreciation. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Child Welfare Professionals Appreciation Week, which is June second through sixth. Everybody here correct? So whereas every day in Pennsylvania, thousands of children are at risk of child abuse neglect or been removed from their homes due to such things as abuse. Pennsylvania recognizes the risks and the needs of protected children. Whereas the challenging task of investigating child abuse, providing services to babies, assessing safety, and providing services to ensure that Pennsylvania's children are provided with insurance and connections to support their position to adulthood, and services that allow a child to remain safely and healthy as expeditiously as possible falls to the child welfare professionals of Pennsylvania. Whereas the work of child welfare professionals frequently requires them in situations where their personal safety may be at risk, and child welfare professionals may work in difficult emotional situations for children who have been victimized by physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, and other forms of adultery. Whereas child welfare professionals must develop great skill in helping families during crisis situations, whereas child welfare professional policies can stand to value and still surround the rights of babies. So therefore, as of on this day, the Fayette County Commissioners are reclaiming June seventh through June sixth, twenty twenty-five, as child welfare professional institutions.
Thank you.
You have a spokesman want to say anything? Everybody's quiet today, I hope they can work. Thank you. So there's also Child Welfare Service Providers Appreciation Week, which is June ninth through thirteen point one five. So whereas every day in Pennsylvania, thousands of children receive services from child welfare service providers because of dealing with county child welfare agencies. And Pennsylvania recognizes the risks and the need to protect the state's children and families and provide services for the betterment of their lives. And whereas many of the services provided to children and families through Pennsylvania's child welfare system are provided by private service providers working with county child welfare agencies. And these providers fulfill crucial services that protect children, strengthen families, prevent future abuse in their lives. And children, welfare service providers work for children who have experienced trauma and have been victimized by physical abuse, sexual abuse, neglect, and other forms of adultery. Whereas children, child welfare service providers are culturally relevant in trauma-informed expertise for their work in family preservation. And child welfare workers must develop and maintain substantial knowledge and skills surrounding the needs and risks of regular families, the law, and regulations for child welfare. And whereas child welfare service providers exhibit tremendous dedication to the endeavor of protecting Pennsylvania's children. So therefore, we, as county commissioners, proclaim June ninth, thirteen point one five, as child welfare service providers appreciation.
Thank you.
Scott, before we get started, as the only lawyer here, I think, yes, I just wanted to extend the Bar Association's appreciation to the court employees as well. We work with these folks constantly, they make our lives a lot better. I work in a lot of other courts, counties, and I know our court employees are top-notch and are as good or better than any other surrounding county. So on behalf of the lawyers, we thank the court employees for all they did.
All right, we'll go to item number five, the financial condition of the county, and we welcome Controller Rob Rhodes.
Thank you, good morning. I submit to you the May financial report of Fayette County. Our cash balance in the general ledger is $2,609,648.72. Our trans-tax anticipation note is $6 million. Our twenty-five budget, $57,208,324.46. Year-to-date, $6,521,708.28. Percentage received, 28.88%. Our twenty-five expenditures, our budget is $55,315,404.85. Year-to-date, $22,269,651.13. We've used 40.26%. Due to the general fund, payments due to general fund from CYS, $8,156,734.4. Loan payable due to general fund from CYS, $750,000, for a total of $8,906,906,734.4. Act thirty-four Marcella Shell Fund, Fund thirteen, in our cash balance unconventional wells account, we have $10181.42. Our legacy account, $39,512.34. And our bridge department account, $22,2632.73. In the capital reserve fund, Fund fifty-one, our cash balance is $95,839.39. Thank you.
Rob, and any questions that you have regarding this report? You may reach the office of the Controller. Go to number six, behavioral health and administration.
Consider approval of the following modification. For modification agreement number two, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, Laurel House, Inc., as listed.
Motion?
Motion.
I second the motion, motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. Number seven, children and youth.
Consider approval of a fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five purchase of service agreement between the county of Fayette through CYS and Juvenile Probation and Families United Network, Inc., two seven six Ashler Manor Drive, Monsepa, for foster care and group home services on an as-needed basis. The rates are listed.
Motion?
Motion.
I second the motion, the motion was promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero.
Consider approval of a fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five fee agreement between Fayette County CYS and Gabriel Farah, P.C., 1010 Western Avenue, Suite 200, Pittsburgh, P.A., for assistance with exiting state civil service and the development of its own merit-based system. The rates are listed.
Motion.
I second the motion, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries two zero.
Consider approval of the acceptance of the resignation of Fayette County Children and Youth Services Advisory Board Member, Dr. Selena Mattis, effective immediately.
Motion.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. I second the motion, now the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. Number eight, human resources.
Under Building and Grounds, consider approval of the resignation of Melissa Arnold, custodial worker three, effective April twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Motion?
Motion.
I second the motion, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero.
Under Central Department, consider approval of the resignation of Emma Santor, part-time clerk, effective April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
I second the motion, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero.
Consider approval of the resignation of Tonia Pierce, part-time clerk, effective April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
I second the motion, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero.
Under CYS, consider ratification of the promotion of Chastity Garlets to caseworker three, SEIU CYS, $28.27 an hour, $55,120 annually, effective April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
I second the motion, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero.
Consider ratification of the voluntary demotion of Marissa Angle to caseworker two, SEIU CYS, $28.27 an hour, $55,120 annually, effective May fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
I second the motion, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero.
Consider ratification of the hiring of, excuse me, Madison Kostandineu, case aide one, SEIU CYS, $19.31 an hour, $37,655 annually, effective May fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
I second the motion, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero.
Consider approval of the hiring of Abigail Sullivan, caseworker one, SEIU CYS, $24.04 an hour, $46,878 annually, effective May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
I second the motion, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero.
Under EMA, consider approval of the resignation of James Bitner, part-time dispatcher, effective March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
I second the motion, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero.
Under FACT, consider approval of the resignation of David Stevenson, full-time bus driver, effective May third, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
Motion is promptly moved, I second the motion. Now the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero.
Consider ratification of the hiring of Denton Martin, full-time bus driver, non-CDL, SEIU, pay grade twelve, step SR, $17.45 an hour, $34,027.50 annually, effective May fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
I second the motion, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero.
Consider ratification of the hiring of Jeff Cavalier, part-time bus driver, non-CDL, SEIU, pay grade twelve, step SR, $17.45 an hour, effective May fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
I second the motion, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero.
Consider ratification of the hiring of Thomas McGinnis, part-time bus driver, non-CDL, SEIU, pay grade twelve, step SR, $17.45 an hour, effective May fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
I second the motion, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero.
Under Veterans Affairs, consider ratification of the hiring of Frank Salve, part-time Veterans Affairs driver, non-union, $16.32 an hour, effective May first, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
I second the motion, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero.
Consider ratification of the hiring of Robert Zally, part-time Veterans Affairs driver, non-union, $16.32 an hour, effective May first, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
I second the motion, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero.
Human Resources, consider approval of an update to the workers' compensation panel to be effective May first, twenty twenty-five, to add Smith Chiropractic due to availability on weekends and evenings, and to change the urgent care from Med Express Urgent Care to UPMC Go Health Urgent Care due to the name change.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
I second the motion, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries two zero. Number nine, juvenile probation.
Consider approval of the Axon Incorporated Five-Year TASER VII Replacement Agreement to replace and update eighteen units at a total cost of $80,654.40. The proposal will save $14,914.80. The proposal will save $14,914.80 over the current cost units over the five-year period. The cost will be equally divided between the JCJC Admin and Title IV E line items.
Mr. Motion?
Motion.
I second the motion. The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries two zero. Number 10, the Office of Human and Community Services Fact?
Consider approval of the County of Fayette's responsibility to provide Fayette Area Coordinated Transportation Local Matching Funds in an amount up to approximately $384,539 to match state funds provided pursuant to 74PA Section 1513 for fiscal year 2025-26.
Motion.
Second. Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two zero. Number 11, planning, zoning, and community development?
Consider approval of a grant application to the 2025 Growing Greener Plus Grants Program, Department of Environmental Protection, to update the county's Act 167 Phase I plan. The total project cost is to be determined.
Motion.
Second. Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two zero.
Consider approval of signature authority to Art Capella in ECMS for Fayette County Bridge Projects 72, 115, 2, 3, and 155.
Mr. Motion?
Motion.
I second the motion. The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two zero.
Consider approval of signature authority to Art Capella in ECMS for Fayette County Sheepskin Trail Project, preliminary engineering, final design, and construction phases.
Motion.
I second the motion. The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two zero.
Consider approval to solicit bids for Meadow Run Bridge Number 82, a county-owned bridge located in Stewart Township, Fayette County. The objective is to replace the existing superstructure.
Motion.
I second the motion. The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
This is a critical bridge up in the mountains that needs replaced. The Stewart Township supervisors were really pushing for this, to get it replaced, and we're going to do it as cost-effective as possible. Our bridge department's going to do the entire structure. When they do our bridges, they're a lot more cost-effective than turning it over to Pendot. It would take a lot longer and cost a lot more. And we've done a lot of bridges just that way, to save money. But this one is definitely going to get done, you know, as things move forward. So it's, I'm glad to see it's, we're able to accomplish that.
This bridge is critical to emergency services as well in the mountains, and this bridge cuts off a lot of time for ambulance service to certain residents. So hence the need for not just going around the bridge forever. So we're glad to partner with Stewart Township to make sure this happens. Will we vote on it, Rick?
Yes. Consider approval to award bid 25-05 for the Dunlap Creek Park Lake Trail Development Project to raffle construction in the amount of $1,140,000. Raffle construction is located at 409 Menden Road, Ruffsdale, PA.
Motion.
I second the motion. The motion is promptly moved and seconded. I will say it's not a lake trail, it is a lake trail. So a little typo there, but this goes back to the planning of park improvements, not only for Dunlap Creek, for German Mason Town, and for Jacobs Creek out in Bullskin Township. We've done some improvements at Jacobs Creek. These are, this is the wish list for Dunlap Creek. And then we have some new improvements coming up for German Mason Town that are in the works as well. So happy to move forward and improve the quality of life for Fayette County residents.
We made a commitment. We made a commitment several years ago to upgrade our parks, and we knew that when we did that, we had to partner with the state because the funding, at least half of the funding had to come from the state. So we developed a good rapport with the DCNR, Adam Mattis and his crew, and he suggested that we do master plans for the parks. We did that for all three of our parks, Dunlap Creek, Jacobs Creek, and Mason Town-German Park. These plans, they gave us funding to do the plans. We focused on public outreach. We had a lot of public participation from all of the, all of the different citizenry that use those parks. And one of their number-one requests for actually all the parks is to have walking trails around them. So we're just following that plan, and we got funding. We got $514,000 already in hand from the state to get this done. And, you know, I know there's been a lot of interest for Dunlap. I see Captain Al back there. You started all this many years ago, and Joe Petrusi and all the supervisors from Anellen. And, you know, I know how much you want to enhance that park. That was, it was something that we had to grapple with the last budget because that was a point of contention, that there was, you know, that match that was required. We had $514,000, over half a million dollars in hand from the state, and we needed to move forward on that. Or we would have lost that $514,000, and that park would have just remained as is and not been enhanced. So I know you guys are here today. I, you can maybe say something at the end of the meeting if you'd like about what it means to you, that park, but, you know, we're trying to improve the quality of life in Fayette County, and this is one way to do that. And I've gotten, I know Joe Ambrose and myself and Commissioner Dunn have gotten numerous calls about Dunlap. That's, it's a rarely high interest, you know, with the citizenry wondering when it was going to get done, and it has been a long time coming, but we're, we stuck with it. We did what we had to do, and now we're at this point where this thing's really going to happen here very shortly.
We voted on that, too?
No.
No?
No vote.
We didn't vote on it. It collapsed too soon. Take a vote now. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two zero. Number 12, commissioners?
Consider approval of the April 15, 2025 Commissioners Agenda Meeting Minutes?
Mr. Motion?
Motion.
I second the motion. The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two zero.
Consider approval of the April 17, 2025 Commissioners Meeting Minutes?
Motion.
I second the motion. The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Consider approval of a motion directing the solicitor to negotiate and draft a memorandum of understanding or other similar agreement with Fay Pen Economic Development Council, Pennsylvania Nonprofit Economic Development Corporation of 1040 Everly Way, Lamont Furnace, PA, for the transfer to Fay Pen of three county-owned properties identified as parcels The purpose of this transfer is to provide Fay Pen the means and opportunity to cause to be placed utility lines across said properties for economic development. A condition of the transfer is Fay Pen's agreement to reclaim the surface area of said properties and any adjacent trail properties to the trail standards in the Sheepskin Trail feasibility study of 2018. A copy of the relevant portion thereof is attached. Fay Pen will also need to agree that if they ever cease to use the subject properties for the intended purpose, they will revert back to county ownership. Final approval of the MOU or other agreement will require additional approval by the commissioners at a public meeting.
Our motion?
Motion.
I second the motion. The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I see a win-win with this. You know, as we discussed, you're advancing economic development by giving a corridor to be able to do infrastructure down in the southern end of the county, but you're also getting six miles of trail built at no cost and no need to acquire grant money. So that's a big chunk with our 34-mile trail that we have about 10 miles built of. So I think this partnership will advance the trail and advance economic development.
So Fay Pen has been a great partner for the trail. They're also working on sections in North Union Township. I don't want to make their announcement for them since it's their project, but they, you know, between this trail project and the next one, we're probably looking at eight miles of trail being built.
It's even better.
Without grant money, without any, any of the things that cost the additional fees for bike trails. And so we're very, very pleased with that. If we can get those two sections completed, then we're looking at basically three sections left that, you know, we'll have to fill in the gaps. So we're excited about this transaction, and we look forward to having Fay Pen do their own press for this at a later date.
I know, like, we've said it many times with the Sheepskin Trail, but we find, we have found ways, ingenuic ways, to not use general fund monies to build the trail. This is one way that, you know, we can get, I'm glad it's eight miles. That's even better than six, but eight miles worth it.
I'm including.
Oh, yes. And, you know, that's not a cost to the county, and then when we did have to match things, we did it through our hotel tax funds, which we get every year, and our LSA funds. So nothing came out of the general fund for this particular project, and I think that's important. You know, we're seeking grant money and we're not affecting our general fund.
So when I, when I got to talk about Sheepskin Trail, first thing I say is, please remember that $0 of the Fayette County General Fund are used to build the Sheepskin Trail. Everything is used, everything that we try to get for a match is, we will get federal funding for a majority of a project with a 20% match. If we get that federal funding, the state typically has approved giving us the grant for the 20%. So we haven't been using the general fund. This year, we didn't, and we haven't been using it in previous years. So I just want to make sure that that stays out there and relevant in the community, that we are not using general fund, Fayette County taxpayer money to build the Sheepskin Trail.
And the cost of the trail is, you know, there's been numbers thrown all around. It's, you know, it's not $700,000 a mile. It's, the last couple bids came in at, what, $450?
$454,000.
$454,000. That's still a lot of money, but it's all grant money, and we don't create the specifications that require us to follow that. You know, we have to follow the specifications to get the grant money. That's, that's the state of Pennsylvania, different departments specs that they have created, and we have to follow them. But we've been aggressive with this, getting funds any way we can to build the trail, and, you know, we're trying to get it built as quickly as possible.
So, not a lot of ask comments at this time, but the 10-foot wide trail will, I want you to understand why it's important for me to build the 10-foot wide trail. You know, so first off, it's a community asset. Our residents are going to be able to use it for their own transportation, active transportation, and for their outdoor recreation, their ability to get healthy. But then from the tourism economic development standpoint, there is a trail study for the Great Allegheny Passage that shows an economic impact of $800,000 per mile annually. So the Sheepskin Trail is 34 miles long, just, you know, using that number, that's a $27 million annual impact to Fayette County's economy. That would provide $4.3 million in federal, state, and local taxes being paid, and it would create about 300 jobs. Now, it's not 300 jobs all in one place, it's 300 jobs all along the trail. Fayette County Tourism, we have the Fayette County Tourism Money Report that I think I said at the last meeting. In 2024, tourism, all tourism, not just the bike trail, in Fayette County was from out-of-state tourists, spending in Fayette County. 2024 out-of-state tourists was $684 million. Twenty, 19% of all restaurant spending in Fayette County comes from out-of-state tourists, and 15% of all spending in Fayette County comes from out-of-state tourists. So when you see those numbers, that reinforces the fact that we want to bring more tourists to Fayette County. This is how you do it. You build a trail that connects a section in Pennsylvania to a section in West Virginia. That is, the Sheepskin Trail will be the only point at which these two trail sections connect, and it will connect over 1,400 miles of bike trail. So this is why, you know, people say, well, it's very expensive. It is very expensive, but it's also going to pay dividends.
And just in closing, I don't want to keep blabbering this, but, you know, we're talking so much about the trail and the park trail and the Sheepskin Trail because it's been, there's been negativism towards that, and we wanted to extol the virtues of why, why we're doing it. But believe me, it's only one of numerous things we work on, on a daily basis. We're moving on all fronts. We're hitting, you know, we just came yesterday from a meeting on Route 21, trying to widen it to hopefully four lanes, you know, for, to make that a safer highway. We're working, we're meeting next week with the Secretary of Transportation to try to get our funding for our business park that we're extension, the business park extension, Thompson's Crossing, up near Route 40 and North Gate Highway. You know, we're constantly working on various projects. We're meeting this week for that tactical center. I mean, I could go on and on. There are so many things we're working on. That's just a small fraction of what we're trying to get accomplished, but we've been mentioning it because of the negative impact that has been caused, you know, and questions raised about it, so.
And the other, you know, in addition to what Ben said, you know, we are working on grants for water, sewage, housing, economic development. I mean, everything is on the table. So, you know, when, when it is mentioned to me that we're not working on Fayette County's priorities, you know, just like today, this, this motion that we're going to pass here in a minute, if we ever stop talking, you know, it's about building infrastructure. It's about, about building utilities and bringing utilities into Fayette County. So that's all the stuff that has to happen for us to rebuild our economy.
We've requested $14 million from the federal government to achieve all these priorities, and, you know, that's how extensive our, our work has been to try to get this stuff funded and move the county forward. So we have to move on all fronts to get, you know, to make Fayette County a better place to live, so.
All right, well, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. We will take a vote on that. Motion, or take a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two zero.
Consider approval of the reappointment of Muriel Nadal to the Go Laurel Highlands Board of Directors with the term to expire June 30, 2026.
Motion.
I second the motion. The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carries.
Consider ratification of the following transfers that occurred in the 2025 budget from April 14th to May 7th, 2025, with debits and credits of $24,958.92.
Motion?
Motion.
Second motion, the motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Consider approval to advertise a request for four proposals, RFP, for countywide auditing services for the years 2024, 2025, 2026, and 2027 at the request of the Fay County Controller.
Motion?
Motion.
I second the motion. The motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Before we vote, I do want to say that there has been some online chatter about an independent auditor being hired by the county. We have an independent auditor. We are audited every year for the last four years by Zelenkovsky Axle Rod LLC. They're an independent auditor. They are the same auditor that audits the Pennsylvania Lottery. So we are, we have the draft audit of our most recent audit, which was from the 2023 financial statements. 2024 financial statements are being compiled now, and this RFP will hire the auditor for 2024 and then the three years remaining after that. So I just want to put this out there, that we are audited all the time. There is nothing that we do that is not audited. So fact is audited by PennDOT, behavioral health by the Department of Human Services. Every grant that we get is, we have to give information back to the state and federal administrators. Our opioid money is audited by the Pennsylvania Opioid Trust. There is nothing that we do that doesn't have somebody overlooking us to audit. So the draft audit that we have for the 2023 financial statements will be released as soon as it is not in draft form, which should be soon, but I do want to solicit if I'm permitted to read from a draft.
Sure.
In our opinion, this is from Zelenkovsky Axle Rod LLC, Certified Public Accountants, the independent auditors report, again, this is a draft, we don't anticipate that this changes to the actual report. Some quoting, "In our opinion, based on our audit in the report of the other auditors, the company's financial statements present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the government activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information for Fay, for the county of Fayette as of December 31st, 2023, and respective changes in financial position, and where applicable, cash flows for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." What does that mean? That means that we passed our audit. I just want to put that out there, since my friends on WMS Radio like to say otherwise. So, did we vote on that one?
No.
Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, aye, aye. Motion carries two zero.
This will be a four-year period, giving everybody a chance to, you know, to have, if they're interested in providing auditing services, I think it's a good idea to do the RFP.
Consider approval of the acceptance of the resignation of Fay County Commissioner Dave Lor effective May 11th, 2025.
Your motion?
Motion.
I second the motion. Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? You know, being county commissioner is a tough job. I'm just going to put that out there. You get hit a lot, you get hit on social media, you get memes made about you, you have all kinds of things that happen. You know, it's a tough job, and I respect anybody who has sat at this table and made the tough decisions that had to be made. So I want to thank Dave Lor for his years of service, and I want to wish him well in his retirement. I hope he enjoys his time with his family and his traveling and his hobbies. I know he likes to wrench on cars. So with that, thank you, Dave, for your years of service.
I also want to wish him well. I served with Dave for 10 years, approximately, and, you know, he deserves to enjoy life, and, you know, I hope, wish him best of luck with, you know, and good health to him and his family.
Motion is promptly moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Call for a vote, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. On our website, Mary, is it on our website now? The process for applying to be appointed to fill Dave's position is on the Fay County website. I know it's been in several of the newspapers and on the radio and places like that. So basically, you've had to be, you had to be continuously a Republican since November 7th, 2023. You have to provide a letter of interest to Judge Laskin, and by tomorrow noon, and the courts make that decision, we do not, just for the record. Number 13, public announcements.
I have one. Public announcement, on Friday, May 30th, we will proudly commemorate the 200th anniversary of Marquis de Lafayette, his final visit to Fayette County, 1825 to 2025. Join us in a special ceremony at 2:30 on the steps of the Fay County Courthouse with proclamations, music by the VFW Band, members of the Fay County Historical Society, as well as an appearance by Marquis himself.
Okay.
That could get interesting.
Yeah, and this event will also kick off a year-long celebration of the America 250 Birthday, which will conclude with a culminating event on July 4th, 2026. So it's going to be a lot of festivities for the, you know, the 250th birthday and the 200th visit from Marquis. And also, the same evening, there's a celebration that will continue with the summer kickoff picnic at Washington Run Park in Perryopolis. The event begins at 5:00, live music starts at 7:00. There will be food trucks, a tour of the Washington Grist Mill and Distillery. This event is hosted by the Perryopolis Parks and Recreation. And additionally, on Sunday, June 1st, there will be a Lafayette Returns to Friendship Hill event, beginning at 10:30 a.m. Maybe Albert Gallant and him will both be there, and there will be performances again by the VFW Band, and hear Lafayette and Gallatin talk about their friendship and how Lafayette visited, impact, how it impacted southwestern Pennsylvania. So those are big events that the public is all invited to. And, you know, we have a rich history in this county, and we need to, and, you know, celebrate it and make sure that we remember it, and, because it's our foundation for, you know, our county. Thank you.
All right, now is the time for public comment. Anybody that wishes to comment can come up to the podium. You will have three minutes. This is not a Q and A session necessarily. If we have the answers to your questions, we will provide them. We may not have them as we sit here today, they may be up at the courthouse in our office. So please, you will have a three-minute time limit, and we will ask you to state your name.
David Smith, Nicholson Township. I come here today to speak knowing it falls on deaf ears. It makes me sick the more I see and hear about solar in our township, Nicholson, and Fay County. Finding out from many meetings from the solar companies that our county commissioners and our township supervisors have knowingly worked with and met with the solar companies for years. That's quoted by the solar company, numerous times we've met with the township supervisors and numerous times we've met with county commissioners. Fay County should be protected and is protected by the federal government under the Environmental Justice Act, where we shouldn't be impacted by all this industrial solar. Our farmlands should be protected by the farmland preservation. We have one dairy farm, again, in Nicholson Township. It's the only one left in the 51st District. We should be protecting our small farmers, and recently, I've been working with, for the last two years, working with a lot of new farmers and upcoming dairy farm, or small farms, growing their own beef, cattle, working with them. Now, we're going to get all this industrial solar. We're not, these young generations are not going to be able to farm. Okay, they quoted me that Nicholson Township was going to get, receive $150,000 application fee for solar. I'd like to know what Fay County's application fee is, and how much Fay County's getting out of this, because they're telling me we're going to get $17 million in tax revenues over, over 40 years. But we're going to destroy our farmlands and our community. You want to talk about preservation of history? We have, there's a federal-protected Indian Trail on this farm that they're putting in solar in now, over 1,400 acres, it's 800 acres or whatever, solar. Where's our rights? Why are we not being protected? Is my time up?
51 seconds.
Well, like I said, I like to know where all this money is going and who's getting it, and why are we, why are we not notified? We should be notified as soon as you're notified. It should be public record that these companies are coming in here. Thank you, have a great day.
I have never met with a solar company, just for the record. Never had any meetings or discussions. These solar companies have been going right to the landowners and to the, and, you know, paying and having hearings with the zoning hearing board. Never have I met with any, and I don't see where we're getting, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner, the fee that we get from them is a standard fee. We're not getting big dollars from any solar companies.
Whatever their fee is to go before the zoning hearing board.
That's it.
For a solar company, it's the same as any other company. There's no additional fee. I want to echo Commissioner Vasides, and I want to look you straight in the face, and I'm telling you, man to man, right here, I have never, one time, met with a solar company. I am not working, I have never worked to bring a solar company to Fay County. Not one time.
Yesterday's hearing, back in the book, it says, I think it's section 222 for the, right, so it's the second report, it says right there, right in the evidence they submitted that they met with the county commissioner, right in the evidence book that they submitted in their plan.
I don't even know, you can put the name in front, they may have emailed us, and they may have, and we got a lot of emails from solar companies while we were trying to pass our solar ordinance. Are these solar companies?
Yeah, they reached out to us because they didn't want us to pass those stringent setbacks.
So, so that, other than those communications for us asking us not to pass the solar ordinance, I'm very, actually very proud that we had two public hearings, you were both of them. We heard from the citizens of Fay County, and we stood up for the citizens of Fay County by passing the solar ordinance. There's a solar ordinance that the solar companies hate, and the reason that this, that Fay County is active for solar is that we are deemed by the Department of whatever in DC, Department of Energy, I don't know who that is, Department of Commerce, as a economic, as a, not economic, as an energy community because we lost coal jobs. And so they are, what they did in DC was, they said, we will give a company more tax credits if they go to these energy communities, which Fay County is deemed an energy community. So some, the entirety of the state of West Virginia is an energy community. So, you know, that's why there are additional tax credits for them to come to Fay County and put these things here versus putting them somewhere else. That's, that's why, again, they haven't come to us, I've not spoken to one solar company other than, again, asking us not to pass the solar.
I'd like to open the question, because it says they're putting the solar farm in, and they're running their taxes under clean agreements. What would they say, bring appropriate and unsold?
I don't believe that's.
I think they lose the.
Yeah, they would lose clean agreements. They would have to pay back, there's a payback penalty in like seven years of the previous taxes that they would have to pay back. Any other public comment? Got to come up to the podium, state your name, and you've got three minutes.
James Trump, I'm speaking for my wife Karen, we live at 750 War Branch Road. A large portion of their solar panels are going to be right along our ag fields, and they reached out, or they said they reached out to all adjacent landowners. We were never notified of any solar farms, any way, shape, or form. The people across the road, Ada, I can't think of their last names, they bought Genovisa's coal yards, truck garage, and they said they was never notified either. And those poor people, their solar panels gone clear around their place. So I just wanted to make it known that they didn't reach out like they said they did to everybody.
Response to that, other than, other than make sure that's known, just on the hearing board that.
Yeah, when a petition's filed before the board, there's certain requirements of notice that have to be given, set by the statute in our zoning ordinance, and if they're not given, that can be a grounds to appeal, any determination, but that's not something the county, well, the zoning office does.
Right.
Is that something pre-done?
No, that's the county, the zoning hearing board does, basically through our zoning office gives notice. Once there's a petition filed and there's going to be a hearing, I don't know if that's what you're talking about, or whether it's the company saying they did outreach before they even got to that point. And that's the right way for companies that are going to do major projects, is to try to have outreach to the community even before they file anything. And that's certainly, if they ask me, that's what I encourage them to do. Talk to the people, educate the people, be upfront with the people, be transparent with the people. And some companies do and some don't. It's kind of up to them. They do have to follow the legal requirements when they file a petition, and that requires notice. Of course, it's in the paper if there's going to be a hearing, it's all the property's posted usually for some hearings, so those are the way people, and nowadays, usually, these matters, because of social media, they get around. Now, whether they're answering your questions, whether they are going above and beyond their bare minimum of the law, that's somewhat up to them, but.
And social media is not a legal, just for the record.
Correct.
Right, it's not a legal way to notify someone.
But everybody seems to get their information that way anymore, for good and for bad.
That's how, that's how we have it, saying, if you're not happy with the actions in regard to zoning or the zoning decision.
Thank you.
My recommendation would be to get a zoning lawyer to protect your rights.
Any other public comment? Okay. I'll read them in a minute. This guy's going to take three minutes.
My name is Brian May, I'm a Minnella Township Supervisor. I'm so happy and proud that you guys have worked so long and so hard to get this walking trail around Dunlap. It is a gem in our community. I'm so glad that you guys are. I, I, I'm so glad that you guys are working towards Fayette County's, all of our parks are beautiful. I just want to say thank you very much and that's all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for bringing brief.
And thank you for doing that one section. I know John Yanko and Joe Petrusi were there.
Our staple, our road staple.
Yeah, that, along that, that, that was a big help to getting this done.
It was a great project.
Let's state your name.
My name is Al Pack and sometimes known as Captain Al, okay? And the reason for the Captain Al is because I moved into Manelon Township back in the early, 1973 approximately. We bought property there and at that time, the lake wasn't there. Then the county decided, a little bit of background on this because I lived this, I saw it all develop, I saw them build Dunlap Lake, so I know, I think I know a little bit about Dunlap Lake. But anyway, I hear, I'm here to thank the commissioners for doing a great job in getting us started with this walking trail around the lake. I want to say this, when I had the business, and I had it for approximately 40 years, and it was a side business, I'm really a retired educator, I was in teaching and administration in the schools, but I formed a group at Dunlap Lake, it was called the Dunlap Lake Task Force Committee. And the idea of the committee was to try to do everything possible to make Dunlap Lake a great place for people to recreate. We started out as a hobby. As time went by, we saw possibilities, doing a lot more with the lake, the fish commission became involved, they started to stock the lake with trout. Trout, for some reason, is a big attractant to fishermen, okay? They love to go trout fishing. It's a big draw. And so, I saw the possibilities of expanding the business, which I did. But anyway, in the meantime, we, I formed this committee because they wanted to do a lot of good things for Dunlap Lake Park. It was called the Dunlap Lake Task Force Committee. And Mr. Vasides over there knows a lot about our committee because we used to have numerous meetings here at the courthouse to try to make improvements at the lake. And I want to say this, of all the commissioners who I've ever worked with, with my group, Vince Vasides was more cooperative and did a lot more for our lake than any other commissioner. So, I want to thank Mr. Vasides for being so receptive to everything we, we wanted to do to improve the lake. So, we did all these various projects at the lake. We had tremendous, great individuals at Dunlap Lake Park who was, who were on my committee. These people, that was their second home for many of these older people. Women were involved, men were involved, children involved. And as a team, we made a lot of progress at Dunlap Lake Park. We got a lot of grant money, as a matter of fact. We were one of the first lakes to have handicapped fishing accessibility. And that was run through a grant. I used to write grants for our school district, that was up in Turkeyfoot Valley School District, I loved it up there. And I wrote grants for Dunlap Lake Park and we, we were the first lake, first fishing lake to provide for people who are handicapped. That goes back to 19, I would say, 82, 83. But anyway, breaking away from that, my time is up.
That's your clue.
Oh, my God. Well, listen, thank you for everything you do, we want to thank our supervisors for everything they do and we, we are moving forward and we're very, very happy for that. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Had a few discussions with Captain Al, this isn't, this is never happening, right? I'm like, we're trying. Any other public comment from the gallery? So, there is public comment online, in the chat. I can't read. Erica says, thank you for the support for the Sheepskin Trail and pursuing grant funding aggressively. Bill Hockington, thank you for, sorry. Thank you, Bill Hockington, thank you for your continued support toward improvements at Dunlap Creek and for the Sheepskin Trail. Eric Snyder says, thank you for your support of the Trail Network in Fayette County, trails like Dunlap Creek Lake and Sheepskin provide all economic, alternative transportation and education benefits and opportunities to our communities. Thank you for your work. Okay. Thank you, guys. Those have been read for the public record.
Before we end, Scott, I'd like to say, I want to thank Commissioner Lor too for the opportunity to work with him for 10 years. He has always been a consummate professional and a hard worker on, in many matters that we work together with. I want to especially point out his work with me on the Mincinsky case. I needed somebody to go with me from the board to, I think, three different mediations, a day-long in Pittsburgh, and he was willing to do that, become knowledgeable in the case, and it helped to have him there when I was trying to convince the federal judge as to what was possible with Fayette County. I really appreciate that work. That was a case that could have devastated the county, it still hurt the county, but it did not devastate us and his work on that was critical and I wish him well.
I, now, you brought that up, I have to say, and I don't think that got out there to the public like it should have when we were doing our, you know, our budget and, you know, finalizing it, but this last budget was very difficult and, you know, we had to raise taxes and it isn't 28%. I don't know why people keep saying 28%, it's 25%, which isn't, isn't good either, but the, the single most important factor in, in expense in that budget, because we hadn't raised them since 2016 on the general fund, and 2020 was just for the prison debt service, but 2016, it was nine years. During that course of time, we had to pay out $5 million with the Mincinsky lawsuit. That hurt us badly. That was probably the most, the most expensive part of our deficit that we had to overcome. And we, we were fortunate, I mean, it was, it started out at 42 million, then it, we got them down to 27 million, which was astronomical and, and very, would have, yeah, been, I don't know, I guess county would have to go bankrupt if, if we didn't get a better, you know, a better final commitment there.
We had no insurance.
And that's the thing, in, in the eighties, yeah, thank you for reminding me, in the eighties, the county commissioners were self-insured and they had no liability insurance. So, we took it from 42 million to 27 million, then we got it down to 12 million and we talked the state into, with the help of Jack and, and our attorneys that helped us from Greensburg, we got it down to 12 million and we had, the state paid eight of the 12 million, so we were left paying 4 million plus all the attorney's fees. Is that correct?
We paid 3 million as part of the settlement.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The state, the state paid 6.
Oh, okay, I thought it was 8. I'm sorry.
Or 5, one of the two, but they paid more than us. And the rest of the money, but you were correct, we, it cost us 5 million dollars.
5 million dollars.
Because of the attorney fees that we paid and expert witnesses and other.
So, that 5 million came out of the general fund and that was the worst expense we had to deal with because the commissioners didn't have liability insurance. The guy was let out of prison after 27 years because, was the reason, John?
Well, he claimed that it was never proven, but he claimed prosecutorial misconduct in his.
So, we had to deal with that, but we got out of it better than we, we could have because it could have really devastated the county. But the $5 million that we had to comply with the court really hurt the county and hurt that, hurt our last budget and that's, you know, I, I don't think that message got out there. Things were said like, oh, we bought all these buildings and that's what put us in the hole. That's not true. We had American Rescue Act money and CARES Act money and we had to spend it by a certain date or we would have to send it back to the federal government. So, we decided to invest in the future of the county as a result. And, but it wasn't, none, none of those transactions came out of the general fund, it was more or less CARES Act and American Rescue Act money. But the Mincinsky lawsuit took a huge hit on our general fund. That was probably the worst, worst expense we had to deal with. I just wanted to get that clarified. Thanks for reminding me.
That was a bad time for, if you would like to speak, I'll give you one last minute, you got to come up here and state your name. You're in a public meeting, you know better.
His three minutes are going to be up by the time he gets up.
I just want to say how.
State your name for the public.
Joe Petrusi, I'm a retired township supervisor, 30 years. John Yanko's back there, he's a supervisor, just retired, 36 years in Manelon Township. But I just, I just want to say that I'm proud of you guys. To see two county commissioners work together for common goals is, is very refreshing. And I know how misunderstood you are at your level because I know how misunderstood we were at our level. But one thing that, that people don't realize, nothing's free and sometimes you have to raise taxes, I mean, or grow, that's the other way to, to get money coming in. But, you know, Fayette County was the fourth lowest taxed county in the state for many, many, many years until you just recently, in the, eight years ago and then recently had to raise again. It's easy to check, get on internet and check it out, but again, thanks, Scott and Vince, we're really proud of you.
All right, one last chance for any public comment. Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
I second that motion. Motion is brought to the move and seconded. Any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.